I can leave no later than seven. Tonight?
Yeah.
Mike has to leave too, so. At seven?
No.
Yes, it'll leave too.
So we're all leaving at seven, if we're all leaving at seven, that's. Can't.
Did this help you with the meeting? But if I did, I'll get another call.
Yeah, but I'll have a digital cell phone.
How are you?
Me too.
Did I tell you she called me at three thirty in the morning?
No.
Yes. And then she called me at six o'clock. All right. Let's go down, let's go down here and. Casey can explain this a little bit. How are you?
Yeah, they've got.
How are you?
I'm well, how are you?
Good. Missed your last one.
We had. Sir G.
Well, I can't sign it. Roland has to sign it.
Oh, I didn't know if you got that and you forwarded it on.
No.
This is only for you. So I printed that out, I don't know.
So this was going back.
No, no. He had signed this and then I got. So I don't know if you printed out.
Now, did you check the?
Did Emily find her packages?
Mike, did you get anything in terms of the letters?
Yes.
Do we need to put this back on?
We did, and I thought he had sent it out to you, but apparently.
So he sent this back and said, we're sending the attached copy. They added specific dates. So we have to counsel through this. But we have to. So you signed the one and then you put the date.
Let me help that council.
So do I need to date this here?
Okay. Mike's leaving at seven. You're leaving at seven?
I'm leaving at nine.
And you there? And Tina's leaving at seven?
No later than seven.
So you are for real leaving?
Yeah, I do have to go. One day of the year, yes, for my support.
All right, so Stacy?
So.
Want to go over this?
Yeah. I, I have put together your truth and taxation notice, your budget hearing notice, and your resolution to adopt the budget altogether in one package that's available out there. And everything has been posted. Tonight, you will have had, or to have, your truth and taxation hearing based upon the card that went out last October.
Which one?
Correct. So as I've been addressing questions that have come along, I, my residents, that you got a partial specific card back in October as the council was working on their budget. The intent at the time was discussion regarding the general fund and a proposal to increase taxes in order to, and at the time we were talking about creating new line items for the roads and for the fire. I said, so the council, the county was required at the time to notify the taxpayers via this card, via this card, that the council was working on their budget and considering a tax increase for these purposes. So that is what the card was for. In the meantime, the council has continued their work on their budget and things have changed, they're continuing their work. And at this point, and you may have misinterpreted, I don't think that you have completed the work and that necessarily what was advertised then is what's here tonight, perhaps. Regardless, because you notified the public back in October that tonight was set for a public hearing on December third at six o'clock, you will need to have an opportunity for the public to stand at the podium and address you and give you their input on this card that they received. Even though things have changed and even may continue to change as you refine and change your budget, because what was here is not necessarily what is here. And I don't think that it is. What we had originally agended, what is in this ad right here, is not the same thing that's in this package, because you have made multiple changes since then. But you are obligated, because we notified the public of a date and a time for them to appear before you to give their input, to allow them to speak to you. So my suggestion, and I think Roland received the same input, is that you hold your hearing because you're obligated because of this. Allow the public to speak, take their input into consideration, close your public hearing, which is basically the same public hearing that's on your adoption of your budget. I don't think you're quite in a position yet to adopt this, I think you're still. I, I'm not quite sure, you're ready? And you clarify or whatever. Go through the rest of your agenda and maybe set your adoption of your 2020 budget and your 2019 amendment as your next move. How did you do?
Okay. All right, so, so on the last page. The six thirty-four is our shortfall, is what we're short?
Correct.
Is that what we are now?
Uh, yes, I believe so, I think all of the other departments are balanced.
Well, that's quite a bit better than what we noticed, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, so remember I told you during the headline look when you said the six hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, that's because we went from eight to seven. So now we're, so now we're short six thirty-four.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes. So Roland and I had a discussion on the agenda, it talks about we're creating two line items, one for the road, one for emergency services. Our intent of the discussion we were having back at the beginning was creating a line item and funding it at the three hundred thousand dollar level for the roads, and creating a line item and funding it at the five hundred thousand dollar level. That doesn't necessarily equate to your shortage, just the discussion at the time was creating line items and funding them at that level. So that's kind of a set over here, that doesn't, again, equate to your shortage, it's just your intent at the time was creating these line items and funding them at that level. I think you have even changed those amounts since then, so even those line items are not listed. But yes, you're right. Gotcha.
And we can decrease our general fund line item by that amount. So.
Yes.
It could go down by two hundred thousand, depending on these other.
So if you were able to, it was post the meeting when we were changing emails regarding Tina's question about the line item resolution, the tax commission, after you make this adoption, is going to look at it as one number, and how you break it out and where you put it, they don't care, I mean, they will, you're going to send them back a piece of paper that says, the county's, the county, not the school district, not the city, not the mountain green fire, Martin County is adopting a budget of six million dollars. Twenty-seven thousand of it's going to the library, three hundred thousand is going to the roads, what X of it's going over here. So they do want it broken, they want the big amount, and then they want it broken out that way. But they care about your one big number, and then they'll want it broken out. So you're adopting the one big number. Does that make sense?
It does. When I read state code, and that's why the discussion, is when I, the state code for setting up the separate line items, so it's the same thing as doing the capital fund, where we have, the capital fund can only be used for that, you still have to set those line items by ordinance according to code. So you are saying, what we give to the state tax commission and what's required for us to comply with state code are two different sets of requirements, we have to, we have to follow steps for both.
I actually think that the code that you printed off is for something different. Those are for special revenue fund, so that would be like the same thing as the garbage fund, maybe, if you want to go with it that way. They don't want a resolution. They, they want their form filled out, which is their resolution, filled out, that I gave you a copy of. Then they suggest that the county adopt their own resolution so that they can say, okay, we broke this line item out for the roads, and this is what it can be used for. We want you to improve the prevention, detection, and mitigation of road-related problems, but you cannot use it for city road maintenance, or buying a tractor, or whatever. The resolution is for the council to identify exactly what that fund can be used for and nothing else. I think the code that you printed off talks about special revenue funds and not necessarily creating new tax line items. Yep, so.
So my understanding, and I followed it through, they, and at the last session, and we added counties in specifically, so I was involved in the drafting of the legislation. And that's not what my understanding of the legislation is, and why we added it, believe did. In order to break it out, so that it is required, in order to separate funds like that, so the same as the capital fund, because we have restrictions on what can be used in the capital fund. This is creating the same type, it is allowing you to do, other than what was already allowed.
So. So I did, I talked to Josh, and that was the conversation that we had just a couple of days ago. That's how he interpreted my explanation of what we were doing.
And when I talked to Josh, we're the first county who's done it. So whatever we do, I think we err on the side of caution, because it is, it is, new code was passed in the last legislative session, we're the first county to do it. Mike, I don't want us to get into the new year and not have done something so that we cannot do it the way we intended to do it. And that is my concern, that if we are going to raise taxes and we're going to take the heat for raising taxes, that it is for the specific items and is only used for the specific items that we allocate it for.
Do you remember where it's at?
Pardon me?
What provision of the code?
Yeah, so I sent it out in emails, but it's seventeen thirty-five.
Seventeen dash thirty-six dash thirty-one point five.
So there's a copy of what I emailed to everybody today for, this is the draft.
That's a sheet, she just gave us.
I looked at my emails, it's mine. So it's derived from a property tag, it was loaned and loaned for a specific.
Paul, we're looking at that, Stacy, can you remind me what the number was, the total number that we used when we did this notice?
Yes. Seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-four.
Seven sixty-nine.
Correct.
So today we're sitting a hundred and thirty thousand less.
So my concern is it makes it look like in the notice that we're just doing this for emergency services and for roads, when actually, the majority of what's going into emergency services is already in the general fund, we're just moving it that way. If we're being completely open over where it's going, then we have to break it down into salaries, insurance, elected official salaries, I don't know if we have to break that out separate, because it's really salaries and insurance being the biggest part of this. And then the increases to, for the sheriff's deputy and his vehicle. So we can break this out farther, truly allocate it to what it is, in my opinion.
Where are all the actual increases? But if we do that, are you, are you saying we just have a line?
No, I'm just saying that because we're switching it from the general fund to a specific fund, it's not really, the increase isn't.
No, it's not just the absolute.
So I'm saying break it down into what it actually is, because.
Just for the sake of discussion?
Yeah, well, just for the sake of public information, so that it's a true indication of what it's for.
So do we know how much of this?
I don't want the emergency services.
Is actually the wages and benefits? Mike, that was part of my question, is, right now it looks like they're doing the whole thing for the roads and for the fire.
And it's not.
Actually, most of it's not.
Well.
Well, it's not emergency services where that would go, that would be for blaine, it could be technically.
But it is funded by one deputy, right?
Yeah, so part of the increase is the funding of the additional deputy, and then salaries, wages, and benefits, and the insurance cost increases is the other big part of this.
So do you have that number?
Not overall, I broke it down per department, so that I could find each department, you know, individually as we were going through and setting each, I don't have a lot off the top of my head, I know that.
What is our total salary and benefits?
I can have it.
Our salary line, because then we could just find what the two point eight percent is of that. And we need to address this, which also adds. We can back in pretty close to that number.
And then you did, you did, the insurance increase was only a person increase.
Yeah, but still, it's still not.
So if we can know what our total insurance cost is, what our total salary and wages cost is, we can back some of this in.
Okay, so can we have that for the meeting on the seventeen, that breakdown?
Just of where each increase occurs?
Well, yeah, where this, where this toll is coming from. That's where my question at the beginning, and that's what Tina had mentioned, it looks like we're doing it just for those two line items, which is not what's happening.
So I think the creation of the line items has more to do with the way the funds are spent than need for the increase in the budget. And, and we don't have to put all of the, in fact, we don't. Yeah, we won't, even with three hundred thousand. Yeah.
Okay, so can, so can, so can you get that break out?
Uh, wages and benefits, is that what you want?
Well, for each of the departments that are having an increase, so like the sheriff's budget increase, total.
Fire and ambulance.
Yeah, and then the overall salaries and wa, salaries, wages, and benefits.
That's where basically all the more is, fire, ambulance, roads, wages, benefits, and sheriff's.
So, police, because I don't think, I don't even think fire and ambulance is the top, in the top five, is.
Well, it is because last year the budget dropped to fifty-three to eighty thousand for EMS, or the thirty thousand for fire. So we're putting that back in, what should have been there in the first place, which
Does make it look like a bigger line item.
Even though it's not really.
All right.
So basically, we just want to break down where the six hundred and thirty-four thousand is coming from.
But to give it an accurate number, we've got to decide on elected officials.
Well, that's, okay, we need to, we need to get that decided.
Yep.
And what we're gonna do, because that will affect the numbers that she's gonna get.
That's the only change that I have.
Well, I was gonna say, does anybody else have any other changes?
No, just that one.
It's the only one.
So do you just want to go around and say what you want to do, and then majority rules? Or how do you want to?
Well, pretty much.
Pretty much what we have to do, right?
Yeah, the majority, that's where the majority sits, and that's where we're at.
I'm for the average. I'm for the average.
I was last time, and I am today.
I would have been with you, Bob. I tried, but I haven't been able to. In my defense.
Darryl? Come back to you, then, Mike?
You hesitated too long.
I, I'm certainly not opposed to the average, it is a huge increase all at once. So I, I would maybe suggest the average minus like one percent this year, and then we get to the average next year, or something like that, so we're stepping in. I know that's not a huge amount, I mean, one percent on this is, we're talking three thousand dollars or so, but I feel like anything helps, and at least it's not. That being said, I feel like we need to move in the right direction, so.
Okay, well, so, I was to explain, Darryl, but my opinion on, on your comment, is it fair enough to do it?
Okay, fair enough.
Instead of bouncing back and forth and saying, okay, well, you know. Just do it and be done.
Just rip the band-aid off and put your trash bag.
Does this currently include that number, or the six point? Includes the six point eight, I think. It did give adjustments. Because that was kind of. So we're talking another eighteen or nineteen thousand? But we're still a hundred thousand dollars better than what we were only seventy dollars, which means we're.
Okay, so you'll include, you'll include that? Okay?
And what did we do on the roads? Did we adjust that to three hundred, is that what we did?
Well, are you gonna let everyone know that that's not necessarily?
Yeah.
Roads, you want to drop that hundred thousand.
So it's a three hundred percent?
Yeah, that's a, part of our, part of our conversation, because I talked to Josh also, to see if we could wait on the actual vote on this?
And we can, right?
And then he, no, you can't.
The vote on the budget?
Um, the budget and the tax increase has got to go together.
Till the next meeting, just not till.
We can, we can do it.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry.
Oh, I thought you were saying, no, I'm watching.
Yeah.
Roland wanted to wait till next June.
I want to wait till June, so we can see where our budget was, before we vote, actually vote on this. You can't.
Okay, so just by the end of the year?
To increase the budget and where we're getting the money from has to go together.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
It'll have to be on seventeen.
So, yes. Okay, so I want everybody here.
But I think that it would be helpful that if you announce, make that announcement.
Okay, any other questions on the budgets?
No, sir.
We're good?
We're clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
The one thing that, on, real quick, Stacy, could you just give us some numbers on the, on the voting districts, on the districts?
Number nine.
Because you got a, huh?
It's number nine, I don't remember.
No, what I've, what I've, can we break that down? Because one of them is like sixty-three hundred, and then the other one is seventy-one hundred on those two papers. So do we have those by district? As in where those are? I mean, so we can look at it, so we can have an idea of.
Define inactive and active. Sorry, define it.
That's towards the backs of the agenda, right?
So the active one was like sixty-three hundred and something?
Yeah.
And the inactive was the seventy-one?
So inactive, still when we've done the roll, we don't remove them all the way, but they haven't, either they haven't voted, or they, we sent them out of ballot and they came back as a bad address, or whatever, so they're inactive, but they're still on the rolls.
So that's seventy-one hundred, or seven-one eighty-six, that's active and inactive, that's what you.
So haven't voted in how long?
Two presidential elections, so it'd be.
So eight years?
So I, I would, I don't know why she would be the inactive ones, I think she really should only go with the active on her list.
Well, so can we get that broke down by area?
Sure.
Well, I mean, so we can know, so we can figure out more percentage of.
Well, if you know where the precincts are, then you can tell, those are the precinct numbers on there. So you, so precincts one, two, three, and four are mountain green, five is enterprise, six is Peterson, and now I'm a little fuzzy after that.
I was gonna share with you, when we got to that one, I didn't know you were gonna remove it, but they've actually sent out the letter. Here's more information for you to pass around. These are the number of registered voter signatures that each of the elected offices have to get when made.
Stacy, you could probably make that group agenda.
Well, the one that's really small is Croydon, and you can't, you can't change Croydon's precinct.
One, two, three, and four, mountain green.
So these are petition signature requirements for all of the counties, and on the organs, they've just listed, signature requirements will be published after the district boundaries are established, so.
Five is Peterson, and six is.
Pretty sure that's.
So you actually would rather have a map than.
And do we have a? Yeah, do we have?
Well, yes, can identify, I mean, that'll where the numbers are.
Yeah. Because we, we adopted it two thousand and sixteen, fourteen? Yeah, so we adopted them and switched them, so they start and move one direction based on numbers, that's why I, when I saw the way the numbers were organized.
So we start at the north and come south?
Yeah. So I think the high. I thought Croydon was the last one.
I think Croydon is the last one, I think number four is the city.
No, four is, is Cotton Woods, it is just.
That I'm not thinking of it right.
Yeah, so districts, yes, but precinct numbers, yes, so these are precinct numbers.
I was thinking.
It's on the county website, right?
I'm like, I swear I remember.
Yeah, it's the precincts, not the districts. So you're looking at the precinct numbers, and the precincts start in mountain green, so the, one is the Highlands, two is Trappers Loop and Rollins, three, Rollins Ranch. So Trappers, so Rollins, and then two, the Cotton Woods, I don't know where they are.
But that's in our, that's on the website, so we'll just need, we'll just call it.
There's a precinct signature on there. So is the proposal then to postpone?
Yes, she wants to do the work session on the seventeen.
Yeah.
But then we also need it on the seventeen.
And then I saw from Roberts.
We might want to adjust precinct boundaries.
Yeah, that. It doesn't matter if anybody has any issues with it, I know the one, who highlighted the yellow?
Jan.
Okay.
On Roberts?
Yeah.
So the discussion decision with respect to the letter to Browning Arms, I got a call from Browning that saw it on the agenda, they asked what the issue was, I told him what it was, and I said, we'll just continue feeding the deer for today.
Well, I didn't really were actually feeding them, I thought it was, I thought it was Jeff feeding livestock and it just attracted the deer.
No, they fed them for a long time, and it, they, they did raise a couple of good points, but they said, you know, this is something we're gonna fall on the soil, so you can take it off the agenda, we'll just stop. But, you know, we, we may need to put a better fence around the airport, I mean, ultimately, that's probably something we ought to consider doing in the future, some kind of better fencing, not just for deer, but keep kids out of there and everything else. And then secondly.
And then secondly, they said, it may increase the number of deer that are wandering through your yard looking for food. And, I mean, my backyard gets shot every year.
Oh, I actually have a solution for that. It works.
Okay.
Fake coyote on Amazon.
A fake coyote?
I put one in front of his sack, because there's one on the University of Georgia practice building. I kept seeing, I'm like, who has their dog out there in cold? It's like, oh, it's fake, Sarah. So anyway, we bought one, and I kid you not, there's not been one deer. I, you move it around, and that one deer, yes. You need a coyote, that's gonna carry you.
I have two bronze lions, they can...
You need to move in your front yard, that's a problem, Bobby. Gotta go over by the airport. Have the real kids out of my yard. That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Keep all the kids out.
So, so this resolution we'll do next week is with the budget?
Yeah. We have longer, market longer.
I didn't say this, I was very quick.
Okay, you ready over here? Hi, Sarah. You ready? You ready, Sarah?
I am ready to.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone out to our county council meeting, our budget hearing this evening. We'll have a word of prayer, and that will be done by Member Newton. Prayer and a pledge, if you'll join us in that, we'd appreciate it.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before you this evening as members of this community, and we ask for thy help and guidance. We're grateful for the community in which we live and for the wonderful people who live here. We ask thee, Father, as we discuss the needs of our community, that we will be able to know and understand them and, and make wise decisions. And these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have a cell phone, if you could turn it down, turn it off, take a phone call out in the hall, that would be greatly appreciated. We're gonna, we don't have any minutes to approve, so we're gonna move that off of the agenda. Um, we're moving, removing the establishment of voting districts to the 17th of December. A member McConnell will remember, we're removing the Browning Arms, correct?
Correct.
Regarding feeding the deer, we're removing that from our agenda. So if those three changes, we'll have a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Member Swan?
Second.
Member Valentine? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Conflicts of interest with any members of the council on any of our agenda items? Okay, none? Okay, so there's, there are two things that's gonna happen. We have a public comment period where you can come up and voice your opinion on anything in the county. But I'm sure the reason most of you are here are the truth in taxation, and that will have its own hearing. Actually, you know what? We are gonna forego the public comment, we'll move that down. And we'll just go to the truth in taxation hearing. Now, a couple of things I need you, that we talked about. Y'all got the notices in the mail. We're still trying to go through the budget, tighten up what we can. We just met with, I talked with the state. We have to submit our approved budget and how we're going to collect the deficit by the end of the year. The, the numbers that are on our, on the paper, the 864 does not correctly represent our shortfall. Right at the moment, we're sitting at a shortfall of 634,000. And so when we get doing our, our actual, vote on our actual budget and our tax increase, it'll be based off of those numbers. We should have those tightened up and finished on the 17th of December, when we're actually gonna vote on it, because all members of the council will be present. So with, with that, what we'll do is we'll start, we'll take a motion to go into our public hearing for our truth in taxation.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion by Member Newton. Second by Member McConnell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So if you would, when you come up, state your name for Stacy, and comments, concerns, issues that you have. This is not a, a two-way dialogue. It's just a, your chance to voice your opinions on what's going on in the county and the council. So the pulpit is now yours. Oh, hold it. I forgot, I gotta start this first. Buster Delmonte. I'm assuming, I'm assuming more of you than four want to make comments, but there's only four on the list, and we'll go to them. Huh? Oh, yeah, so there's your timer. Sarah is the keeper of the watch.
Oh, I'm trying to be way shorter than that. I do appreciate you having me. My name is Buster Delmonte, I live in Phase 4 of the Cotton Woods. I'm here to convey concerns about yet another county tax increase. In this case, it was the postcard I heard discussed earlier, talking about the general fund going up. And then today online, I saw the meeting agenda, and it has more money being required for roads and EMS beyond the general fund increase. So now I'm really concerned. So our background, and I'm just trying to correct my own perception through the self-education process, is that we, our perception is we moved from South Weaver and then part of Morgan County for four years now. And since our first 2016 assessment year, taxes have gone up 17% in, in our four years. If the proposed rate for the general fund is adopted, which, like always, I'm betting the council will affirm, that's like a reply, just for the general fund, not our overall property taxes, will have increased 49% since we've been here in 2016. Both of these numbers far exceed both inflation, wage increases, and any investments that I have. To be fair, we did see a slight decrease in overall taxes and, and in the general fund itself in 2017, but that did nothing to reverse the overall growth trend. To top all this off, it was a little over a year ago that we all got, in my opinion, steamrolled on a maxed-out school bond. We took on this debt before paying off the previous two bonds. This is the slippery slope government spending that I expect in California. Not here in our Utah, we're better than that. So never complaining without offering up solutions. Tax hike marketing, I guess, is the thing that jumped out to me. The postcard is helpful in bringing awareness. I realize that I don't have all the facts. But if you want buy-in from your constituents, then might I suggest some form of better marketing? And I know communication, everybody does it differently with social media, postcards and the rest of it. But I would expect, at least at the website, to be able to find more granular information. And unlike the school bond, please provide the pros and the cons to any, any increases. It just seems to be a matter of fact that we're gonna go with an increase. Perhaps I'm looking the wrong place at the website. All I can find under the Department's clerk tax rates is a single PDF document with 2018 rates by tax area. It's not even current. I would like to see the county do a better job explaining to us how money's being spent. I can dig up the budgets, but they're generalized light items. We just have to take your word that that's how much things cost. I get that we don't have the finger, our fingers on the, the pulse of the budget like you guys do, so please help us understand why always taking more of our money by force isn't bad management. Here's a list of rhetorical comments and questions that I observed. I always love the annual notice of proposed taxes showing the current and potential changes. Has there ever been a time when the higher column was not adopted? And then what, and I'll wrap it up. So I, I live in Phase 4. I did some rough numbers. 24 months, 55 homes in the last 24 months. I'm guessing, rough话, 357,000 in new tax revenue just this year. I'm guessing that's not a zero-sum game where those 55 families are using the equivalent amount in county services. So where's the money going? And I get the budgets there, but I just want more granular data. It's just far out, outpacing any wage or, or inflation rates. And it just keeps going up, so I'm concerned. I'll try to do my part to learn more. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we probably should correct the, the one statement. Not correct you, just the, the misunderstanding. There is only one increase. There's not an 800,000 general fund increase plus an additional 800,000 for roads and emergency services. That's all one number.
Okay, yeah, so when, when we get done, we'll kind of go back, because listening to his deal, kind of explain what we're gonna do. We talked about it in our work session. So I'll kind of explain for those that wasn't here. Did John Patterson, does that sound right?
Evening, I'm John Patterson. I live in Stoddard. Just, reading a couple of things the gentleman spoke to me before is, what are, what are the taxes for? As a business owner in Davis County, I can now tell you that my Morgan County taxes on my home are now approaching the level of taxes I pay in Davis County. Chairman Haslam, as you know, I've talked to you about the roads, because I've been on the side of the road with a flat tire because of the chuckle sounding in the Enterprise area. And I know some of this gets to be a self-looking ice cream cone when we start talking Class B, Class C, Class D roads, and the necessity to maintain them in order to maintain other state and federal funding to go with it. Like the other gentleman, I have seen my property taxes increase steadily and consistently over the last several years. And I can say to a point where I'm gonna be within $200 of what I pay in Davis County. And in Davis County, at least I've been on a level for at least the last three years. Just my thoughts and comments on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Inez Patterson?
That was, that was mistaken.
Okay, no problem. All right. And I'm sorry, is it Rex?
Hartman.
Yep.
Yep.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Rex Hartman. I live here in Morgan City. And I've lived here for quite a while. And I was looking over my, the, the proposed tax increase. It will affect me as a 31% increase just this year, if this goes into effect. So I went back and I looked at the previous taxes. And since 2016, my taxes have gone up 91%. And that's just for the county fund, for the general fund. That does not include the city taxes that have gone up as well. I, I, with the other gentlemen, I'd like to know where this money is being spent. Because I don't see it on, I don't see it driving around Morgan County. I, I'd like to know where it's spent and the justification of, of these tax increases. Because I can tell you this, I'm paying a lot more taxes here than I ever have anywhere else before in, in comparable properties. So anyway, that's about all I had to say, is that I'm concerned where the money's going. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now, I'm sure more of you want to make a comment. If you'll state your name, I'll get your name on this paper that has to go to the clerk's office. So the pulpit is yours.
My name's David Potter. I live at 3934 Iris Avenue in Mountain Green. I've been talking with a lot of my older friends. They're as concerned as I am about these taxes going up on those who have a fixed income. You can adjust things if you're in a business and you're losing money. You can charge more for your product. We don't have a product. We're fixed income. And therefore, it's hurting a lot of people real bad. A lot of the people were like younger people are today. They wanted a larger acreage. Now they're old like I am, and they can't take care of it. It's covered with weeds, and it's, it's a violation of many things that go on. I also want to remind the council that the state is having the special election, most likely on the 12th of this month. And the work you have done on this document is going to have to be changed quite a bit if they do what they say they're going to do. Start taking all of the fees off of property tax to go to the schools, because right now the schools get every penny of the state income tax. And when they get some of the other, that's going to certainly affect the sources that you will be wanting to use. Thank you.
Yes, my name's Aaron Van Dele, I live in Parkdale. So a couple of things I want to reiterate, what he just said, a fixed income. I'm looking forward to retiring one day. At the current rate, where you guys are at, it's gonna be 500 bucks a month, just for retirement, just for tax on the home, which is pretty ridiculous. Another thing I looked at, and maybe you'll clarify it, excuse me, is a riding of the roads. And I've looked into a few, a few things. Bike lanes are pretty kind of a non-issue we like to talk about, but they're an answer to your guys' some of your problems. Put in a bike lane, 80% federally funded or state-funded, takes care of a whole lot of money. We haven't avenue that. We know it's a problem, bikes, right around the roads, they're gonna be here. Let's let them be the solution. And the other thing, that's probably about the biggest of them. But I would ask you guys to look a little bit closer. I have printed out copy on how to fund bike lanes through the state and the federal highway, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
Attorney, I know he won't steal it.
Next.
I'm Campbell Wallace. I live at 677. We have the most time to drive here in Mountain Green. Last year, my tax was $135.07. Know what it is this year? That's about a 300% increase. I don't know what you guys are living off of the taxes, I'm the way to do it.
Thank you.
Dan Rousher, I live at 2870 South Morgan Valley Drive, Forterville. I'm a long-time resident of Morgan County. I remember when there was 2,000... I remember when there was 2,000 people in the old county and knew them all, where they Not the case anymore. And along with the more people that comes into the county, they manage more services. It's a big Ponzi scheme, the development of the county, because the farming ground, when it was in farming ground, for every dollar tax the county collected for it, they had to give back for like 60 cents. And for a house, the subdivision, for every dollar the county collects, they probably give back a dollar 10 cents for the service. So it's a never-ending thing. I can see where it's coming from, but maybe we ought to think about slowing down our development, or how we develop, try to get in more business, less housing, that kind of stuff. I'm sure you've all thought of that, but development is just a short-term fix, and in the long term, it's going to cost us more money. Bye. Thank you.
Dwayne Johnson, I live in Mountain Green. The last several years, I've tried hard to get business to come to Mountain Green, to Morgan County. I come to this council, try to create a CRA, which you would have undoubtedly maybe helped the situation. A 25% tax increase on business, you can forget it. You'll have no future. So taxes on homes will just continue to go up, because you cannot operate a city when you have a 200-foot frontage on a home and expect that to pay the way of the county. You're going to find that out. And so what you're doing right now, if you pass this thing, you've just kissed business goodbye, because they want an incentive. They don't want to pay 25% more tax. So you better to think about that. And as far as your roads go, I'm going to tell you something else. You've did a poor maintenance job on them for the last several years. If you do preventative maintenance on road, on asphalt, it lasts twice as long. That's all I got to say.
Dwayne Johnson, 5833, will have been ruled. For 20 years, I've been coming up here, so we'll talk taxes. The last two chairs that we've had here did nothing to help landowners or business. It's all been negative, negative, negative. If anything, it's a no vote. So as far as trying to get some businesses to come or anything else, this council's did nothing but run people down the road. As far as I'm concerned, so, and I can't speak for my dad, but that's like our development agreement. That's what I tell him every day. The hell with coming up here and begging you people to do things. Leave the commercial alone, we'll fill up the townhomes, and then you can figure out from there. Instead of working with the landowner to do something.
Hey, Wayne.
I'll look where I want, bro. I'm tired of that, and you. If to me, you ought to do the county a favor and resign as a chair. There you go. You and Ned Nickum have did nothing besides help get a deficit. Instead of getting this damn county out of the problems it has, part of the problems that are here today is you and Ned in the last 15 years that I've come to this county. And you can smile all you want. I don't think you could rub two wooden nickels together. Well, it's a true principle, and people need to stand up instead of cower down.
Cindy Carter, Park Gravel. I own a business that is based out of Morgan, but doesn't necessarily, it doesn't go to the public. We're all, all of our business is done outside. We just have a shop here. And this increase is tough, but it's okay. We also own another piece of commercial property that's blank, that has nothing on it, that we would like to someday develop some kind of flex space or something to attract some type of business here in Morgan that's not a Pizza Hut or something like that. I'm talking like a, some kind of manufacturing-type business that we get the best bang for our buck with. My frustration with all of that is that we have formed special committees for this and this and that, but we don't form any special committees to fix this business problem, in my opinion. I know that, I've seen some stuff come through here like this CRA and stuff, but I believe what I saw come through was asking the taxpayer to fund most of the infrastructure for that, and I don't believe that that should happen. So I want you to know, as a business owner, that I'm willing to help do whatever I possibly can to get some kind of, I mean, we're on this clean air thing, and there's people that are getting stuck in traffic on Highway 89. Why can't we, why can't we do something to promote people to move their business here so we can do business, they can get out of their, get out of the bad air, they can get out of the traffic and run their business up here? And I know that's a little easier said than done, but I think we need to really make some good, hard effort to do things like that, and form some special committees that are going to help us with that. I know the governor's office helps. My company has used funds from the governor's office to buy equipment. I know all these new buildings, Precision, Fairway Glass, Center Point Construction, all used NAPA, all used a partial grant from, not a partial, a grant that is out there from the governor's office, which is a great program that we need to be pushing to people and getting out there and try to, I think of a big sign at the bottom of the canyon. It's like, move your business to Morgan instead of fighting this traffic on Highway 89 and breathing this bad air. Anyways, I'm here to help whatever I can do. Thanks.
My name is John Cannon. I'm a resident of Morgan County. And first of all, I have not, my family and I have not lived here our whole life, but we feel very grateful and blessed to be able to live here, and we appreciate the opportunity to be able to live in the county. We understand, I understand the problems that the county has. My hope today would be to ask that as you guys consider another tax increase, that you are very careful to understand the impact that that has on some of the older people in our community, some of the people that have spent their whole life working to pay off their homes, and now they really don't own their home, because we just keep adding another tax to them, adding another burden to them. And so as you analyze and look at this tax increase, I would ask that you look at every other possibility before just adding another tax to our property. Property tax is an easy target. It's something that's just easy. We need the money, let's raise it. But I just ask that we look at things across the board, and I know that it's going to be very difficult and hard for you guys to do, but I just ask that you take it very seriously and look at, and also consider the impact that it's going to have on the people in the community, and we appreciate everybody's hard work on the issue. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is John Crouch, and I live at Lost Creek. Just a couple of things, I guess to start off, look at Lost Creek Road. It's now paved all the way to the boat ramp. You know, in front of my house, they didn't pave anything, because they ran out of money. But there'd be nobody really going up there. If you get to Pine Canyon, there's only one full-time resident above Pine Canyon. Yet we paved seven miles beyond Pine Canyon. Sounds to me like a waste of money. I know there were some other funds that you got from other places, but, you know, sometimes you find yourself in one more good deal when you're out of business. Also, the road that's up there, you need to go up and finish it. Morgan County's going to get in trouble. You've left the shoulders of the road, you haven't done any shoulder work or rattled the shoulders, somebody's going to get in a wreck up there. As far as the tax increase goes, there's two sides to the equation. There's the revenue and the expenses. We're focusing the tax increase on the revenue. I think you really need to look at the cost side of things. I guess that's about all I got to say.
Anyone else?
My name's Ron Porter. I have lived here for a long time. Back our time, it was my grandmother's family, the second settlers in the valley, my wife's family, the first hick in series, so we've been with it. 75 and 76 years. In 2006, I bought some property, or property jams, property down in Stoddard, built a place down there. My son and I built two nice homes. I bought that property, and I had to pay the taxes on it for one month in 2006, and they were $2.85. This year, between my son and I, they'll be over $10,000. I realize we've built homes and everything there. In 2011, yeah, no, in 2011, I brought across on my old checks, and my property taxes were $3,100. That's mine, not my son's. It's on top of it. This year, they were $5,200. That's quite an increase. Same building, nothing's changed since then. I just wonder when it's going to stop, you know? We're on the hill so far. I think these people that wants to get some business in town are real smart, because you can't run a town on property tax and just homes, and so that's all it is.
I'm not here to complain.
Your name, please.
Brett Fern.
Thanks.
I just borrowed, left, wanted to come up and see. I just had a couple of questions, like, one, what do you need the money for? And I'm kind of with some of these guys here. I mean, in the last 10 years, my property taxes went up 150%, so in my mind, you kind of got your tax increase already, so I can only dig so far before I want a reason, I guess I'm saying. And I was late, so maybe you gave a reason when I got here, but that's kind of what I'm wondering.
Okay, I'll answer that once we get done with our public hearing. Anyone else?
So, I don't know if I'm supposed to eavesdrop or not, but I was here for a little bit of the work needed. So my question is...
And could you tell Stacy who you are?
Oh, I'm Mel Rip. I'm Stacy. So I was eavesdropping a little bit, and I heard, I heard comments that, I hear this truth in taxation hearing, and then I heard a board member explain, well, we need to explain that this is not just for roads, it's mostly for insurance and salaries. And so if we're doing truth in taxation, I want to know where my money's going. I don't want to know where it might be going.
Anyone else? Last call. We'll leave it at our budget here. So moved.
Second.
Number new, I think my member Cannon. All those in favor? All right, and opposed. Okay, so to answer, real quick, a couple of the questions, you talked about the money. The way is, this thing was put on the agenda, says funding for roads, funding for fire and ambulance services. And that was one thing. And you weren't eavesdropping, because the work sessions are public meetings. But that's what we was talking about, that we're going to have Stacy for our next meeting on the 17th. She will have all of those line items listed as to where the increase is going. So right now, it sounds like everything's going to the roads and to fire and ambulance, and that's not correct. Some of it is going to wages, some of it's going to fire ambulance, to roads, multiple departments is where this is all accumulated from. So it's not just, it's not just two line items. And so we'll have that for you next, in two weeks. Next, in two weeks is when we're actually going to vote on it, because that's when all the council members will be here. And so you're welcome to come back and see where we end up. In the meantime, you know, we've talked, we're trying to cut this down. When we originally started, you know, we was at like 1.2. Then we got it down to 769. Now we're down to 634. So we're making, we're making progress as far as cutting the budget on how much we're going to have to do an increase on. So with that...
Well, I'd like to address one other issue, one of the questions that was brought up in the very first, if you wouldn't mind.
Nope, you're fine.
So Buster Del Monte, you asked about the 55 new homes. One of the things that is not intuitive in property tax is the way property tax is assessed and why truth in taxation happens. Our budget is based on a number. When 55 homes come in, if that's considered new growth, it's not part of the percentage that's there. So they take the county, so if our budget is $1,000, and we have $100,000 in property values, then that, those, that number is divided. Once we get new homes in, and now the property value goes to 200,000, it still takes that $1,000 for the budget and divides it by the 200,000. In order to do a truth in taxation, you increase the dollar amount, not the percentage. It's not an automatic. So if we continue on growth without a truth in taxation, then everybody's percentage floats down. And that's, that's unique and different to property tax from any other type of tax, so it's not intuitive. So I did want to address that item. And then on the business funding, the grants from GOED, from the Governor's Office of Rural Economic Development, in order for those to be received by businesses, and there have been multiple in the last six years that have received those budgets, those grants, those are sponsored by the county in order to make new businesses more attractive here. I've spent my entire time on the county council, being over economic development and working very, very hard, because I understand very well how hard it is to bring, to attract a new business into a community with a high property tax value. You price yourself out of the market for a new business when the trend continues that way. So we, but we have some unique challenges in attracting businesses. We are looking for, we do have a new economic development plan that needs to be, well, we need to update the new one. So a committee will be formed. I'm sure I will add Cindy Carter as a business owner to it in addressing some of those issues. Also, Dan Rousher, the more people, the more services and the diversification of the tax base, you're absolutely right. When, when you have a growing community and you have largely spaced-out lots, it's really hard to provide enough service to collect on that small, what, on that large of a lot, because typically what a residence will pay in tax, they use $1.10 for, it's actually closer to $1.33 in services, for every dollar in tax it pays. A business, on the other hand, is exactly switched opposite, and it uses about 33 cents. for every dollar that it pays in property tax. That's why when we get out of, you've noticed the growth in Morgan County is exponentially more residential than it is business, and those funds are shifting. Since 2002, you've had not just a loss, not just a no growth in commercial property, you've had a decrease to where we are now, we've gone from 78, 79 percent of commercial property value to residential property down to 17, and we continue to drop. That's why you continue to see the raise in taxes. Until we are able to switch that trend, this trend will continue. So, economic development and diversification of the tax base is a primary concern for every member of the council, and we spend a lot of time working on those issues.
Can we ask a question then?
Pardon?
Can we ask a question then? The gentleman that said that you guys will not approve commercial, yet this is a problem that we're trying to do, that we have to reverse it, you just said, yet you won't approve things for him. Why would that be?
So, what you need to do is understand the entire picture, and it's going to take more than this council meeting for you to understand it?
That very item is on the agenda again, and on the 17th, I believe. It will be back on the agenda again.
So, when I own a business in Morgan, and my taxes doubled, I brought in my stuff to show them that we don't even make any money in our business, and it made no difference on what I got taxed this year. So, it doesn't do any good to come here and talk about this stuff, because nothing changes. And once taxes go up, they never go down. We never see a decrease.
Okay.
So, with respect to economic development, when he says this council, he's going back a number of different generations and iterations of this council. There are new members on the council. We'll have opportunities to vote with respect to the CRA and so forth in the future. There are new members on this council that didn't vote on any of those issues. I am a proponent of economic development. I think we need to diversify our tax base. This budget is not made up of new county buildings or new facilities of any kind. And from my perspective, as a new member of the council, we went through and we evaluated what the different budget requests were from the different departments. We tried to eliminate what we thought was unnecessary. There's even some future or additional things that we're trying to reduce and eliminate. But we've chosen a very expensive way to operate a county, and, and part of that has to do with the fact that we haven't done anything to promote, promote any kind of economic development and commercial enterprise. And, and we are trying, I, I mean, I hope we can get to the point where we can have some of that development occur, which in a rural community, you typically do need to incentivize in one way or another, because most businesses need a place to occupy. They're not in the development business. They need a developer to come in and spend the money to put in the roads, to add the infrastructure, and it is an expensive lift in this county. It's very expensive. We don't have jack. The sewer needs to be improved, the water tank needs to put in, the power facility needs to brought in, the gas needs. If I was just putting something in South Weber County in a, in a built-out community, I just go in and I apply for my site plan and my building permit, and I get it, and I'm now just putting sticks and mortars in the ground to do business. When I come up here, unless a developer's come in and put all those facilities in advance and taken all of that risk in order for it to happen, there's no place for me to locate. And I don't have the expertise to put it, put that kind of infrastructure in in order for it to do it. So, when you see this council trying to make determinations about a town center in Mountain Green or somewhere else, I would encourage you to come support it, because that, from my perspective, is the only way to get away from where we're at. We are doing road maintenance. The, the million dollars up that, that was spent on the road to, that's Lost Creek, right? I get confused between the Lost and the Deep Creek. But the Lost Creek Road, that was principally state funds. We spent $35,000, $36,000 on that. So, that was principally a state-funded road. We've been trying to improve, and the maintenance of our roads is critical. I mean, if we don't maintain them, then we replace them at two to three times the cost. And what we're spending on them has got, over the last year, has got some of the main arterial roads, right? Morgan Valley Drive and Old Highway. This next budget, we're trying to move out and into some of the neighborhood roads that have not been taken care of for a number of years. There is a lot of deferred maintenance that we're trying to address here. And I'm sorry that we're facing a tax increase, but that is just the reality of where we are. And if you want to see something change, you're going to have to get behind some of the efforts to bring in commercial development. That's my personal perspective.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I make a comment as well, just for the, for the benefit of the public? I know probably many of you here tonight are wondering, well, where's my money going? I, I wrote down notes from everybody who spoke, and that was probably the biggest thing that was said, is where, where's this increase going? What's it for? I want you to know that this council spent hours upon hours upon hours going through this budget. We put this budget together, we went through it at least nine or 10 times. We spent nights here until midnight, multiple times, in open public budget hearing meetings. And unfortunately, even though those were open meetings to the public, we had three members of the public show up to those meetings. And those three people are here tonight, and I appreciate them, but only three members of the public came to hear what we were discussing and to understand and to learn about it. It's a complex thing, okay? A county budget is a complex thing. There's a lot going on here, you know? And it was interesting, because some of the comments that were made were, I don't want my taxes to increase, but the county really should do X, Y, and Z. Well, X, Y, and Z costs money. You want your roads repaired? It's going to cost money. You want help with businesses? That costs money. And I want you to know that we've gone through this budget multiple times. That's why we've whittled it down. So, from your notice that went out, we've whittled it down at least 15 percent from that so far. We hope to whittle a little more. I don't know if we can, but if we can, that would be great. Our intention is not to just increase taxes. Our intention is to provide the services that are necessary and vital. One of those is, is our sheriff's office, our police force. That's a vital service. We have to have that. And, and I don't think anybody would disagree that it's not a good thing to spend money on that. Another is our fire and EMS. Those are services we can't live without. We have a shortage of volunteers in our fire and EMS department. I want you to know that, because if you have the ability to volunteer there, even if it's just to go over and help clean trucks or provide maintenance or whatever, please help us with that. We had to increase compensation to our volunteers to try to attract more, because it's either do that or go to a full-time department. And if we did that, we'd be looking at a three or four or five million dollar increase. That'd more than double your taxes. We don't want to go that route, but we're in a situation that's critical, so we need help in those, in those areas. The council can't do that on our own. We can't go over there and run the ambulance. We need people, so...
We're getting kind of critical on how much we can pay.
And I understand that. And, and I don't want to make this a, a back and forth, but I want to be clear. Everybody looks at your tax statement. You'd probably be surprised at what portion of that tax statement is actually county general funds. The vast majority goes to the school district. There's several other line items on there. And I'm not trying to justify that. I'm just saying, please understand, this isn't just an arbitrary, oh, we want to increase taxes because we want to spend more. It's, we're looking at our budget, what we have to spend, what we need to spend to provide essential services, and those costs are increasing. So, by next meeting, we will have an itemized list as to where each of those increases are going. You're welcome to look at that. It's public information. You can look at the budget and see where the money's spent.
And will that be commented on at that point? Or just voted on?
On the 17th, it'll be the vote.
I totally agree with what you're saying. So, I think in the last 10 years, this council, the last 10, 15 years, could have been figuring out what to do not to be in this position. I totally agree that we have taxes to pay, but instead of running people down the road or having to come fight, I, I spent over $100,000 fighting with this county with what they try to take away from people and property rights. So, what could we have did if we'd been proactive, worked with landowners? Because I'll tell you how I feel about the county and this county council. I really don't care. I don't care if I built something that's pink and yellow and is a hellhole. That's what this county councils did with a lot of landowners. Instead of working with them, there's been a few people that want to shove stuff down people's throat, just like the guy laughing. In the meeting in Mountain Green, you did the same damn thing.
Blake, I would like him removed from the building. We're going to continue the, so what we talked about, we're going to, instead of adopting the county budget, what we're going to do is we're going to postpone it to the 17th. Stacy has got the information that we're going to collect for all of you as far as where the money is actually going. I appreciate the comments explaining a lot of the road stuff, because some of it doesn't make sense, but it's federal money, and you don't get to decide what you can do with federal money. They tell you how to spend it. So, with that, we're going to go, I'd like a motion to postpone the adoption of the 2020 budget to the December 17th, 2019 meeting.
Roland, I'll make that motion with the, with the caveat that we continue the public hearing that day with updated numbers for the line items of where the increase is being spent.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Roland, who not meeting be at 6 o'clock?
Stacy, is that where our notifications end up?
6 o'clock was the notification.
Okay, so a motion by member Cannon, second by member Newton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed. Amendment of the 2019 budget. Stacy, you want to go over that?
I suggest the same, so that you all can give an hearing for this to what amendments need to be made from your departments.
So, motion to postpone that till the 20, to the 19th of December?
So moved.
Okay, member Cannon.
Can I just make one comment on the form? Sorry.
Do, do you second?
I said 17th.
Oh, the 17th. What did I say?
Right.
Oh, sorry.
But I will second that.
Okay. Second by member Swan. Member McConnell?
On your resolution form, it says, the title says, "A Resolution in the Morgan County Council Adopting Certain Amendments to Morgan County's 2017 Budget." And then, if you look down in the now-therefore clause, there's another reference to the 2017 budget. So, you just might want to get that fixed before we...
Member Haslam, I would ask to be excused.
Real quick on the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? We need to excuse member Cannon for the previous engagement. Now, we're going to go into our regular business. Gwen, do you need anything on, any comments? We're good?
No, we're good.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the user agreement for multi-county appraisal trust paragon Utah Mass appraisal system.
Member, a motion by member Newton.
Second.
Second by member Swan. Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
I have one question, just on the form of agreement.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're fine.
In, in paragraph three, it says, "The agreement shall automatically renew for an additional one-year term unless either party gives at least 90 days' written notice of the party's election to renew this agreement." I get, is the presumption that that's just 90 days before the annual anniversary of the agreement? It's, it's not clear in the document itself to me, but...
I'm, I'm a legal attorney. I all legalese things.
He's asking you, do you feel like you're going to, do you know clearly when you would have to give them the 90 days if you wanted out of this?
Do I know what?
Do you feel confident on when you would have to give the 90 days if you opted out of this contract if the county offered out? If it's clear to you, then it's...
I'd say 90 days prior. I, we all went on a different time, so...
So, if this one's December 3rd, 2019, so it would be 90 days before December 3rd As, as long, I guess as long as you can track it, I, to me, usually it says 90 days prior to the annual anniversary date or the calendar year-end or something like that. But I, I don't otherwise have any objection to the agreement.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? Derek, actually, it's not Derek.
Derek actually isn't here. Chad is.
Chad.
How you doing?
Good, sir. Welcome.
I have some things for you. I was at a, I was at a truth in taxation meeting in Kane County about six years ago, doing the same thing I'm about to do tonight, 300 percent tax increase. You guys are very civilized. There are no pitchforks here. Kane County had a few. As, as a school teacher, has a recommended reading list that they put, post online. It's always fun to get it handed out. So, and I'll give this one to you after. Get your own copy. I just need to make reference to it. Oh, what the heck? I got one more here.
My pleasure, thank you.
My name is Chad Booth. I'm from the County Seat TV program. This is a program that this county supported a few years ago, and we have now reached a landmark year. We're about ready to launch our 10th season program. I would like to address this group. How many of you people watch the County Seat? Okay. There should be three times as many hands up there as there are right now. And I will tell you why. This is a, this is a program that was started by the counties when they realized that the issues that affect county government just were not discussed. I will guarantee you that the only time you will see Channel 2, Channel 4, Channel 5, or Box 15, their news department up here, is if there are people with pitchforks in this room. But there are issues that affect governments and communities across the state, and for years, they have gotten no traction and no discussion. And that's what we set out to do 10 years ago. And, and in the issues that you are talking about right now, some of you who are upset and, and you, obviously, I'm missing a, I'm missing a tax increase hearing in Salt Lake County where I live, and it ain't no cakewalk tonight either, okay? They're, they're going to basically do the same thing as here and try and whittle some more stuff out and come to some, some agreement. Some of the problems, though, that, that this council is trying to deal with are systemic. Truth in taxation is one of them. This very hearing tonight is one of them. And we actually did a program on this two weeks ago. And if you go to YouTube and will invest a half an hour, you'll understand some of the difficulties this county is going through right now in trying to address this issue. When you look at the areas of how much school boards are taking, your school board probably is doing their tax adjustments in our truth in taxation all the time. County not wanting to raise your taxes, because they are, if you look at your tax bill, a small portion of the taxes. When you look at special service districts, you look at schools, you look at some of the other things, that puts pressure on the county to hold the line, because unfortunately, these people, your assessor, your treasurer sends out the tax notice, they get all the blame for all the other taxing units. And it would be helpful if, if everybody could understand that a little bit better in deference to the sheriff. You know, there's stress on the jails right now, because the state legislature... you know, there's stress on the jails right now because the state legislature, in their attempt to look like they were really being magnanimous, passed JRI. It was Eric Hutchins' bill, passed four years ago. We covered that several times. One of the things that we drove home in the three County Seat episodes that we did on this is that without Medicaid expansion, it was not going to fund. And so, taking and decriminalizing a lot of the offenses that happen in jails shifts the burden of that care of those prisoners from the state to the county. And so your jails now have a bigger burden with mental health issues, with treatment issues, programming issues, and I don't know of sheriff's department in the state that hasn't had to deal with this and it's had an impact on it. So what we attempt to do in our program is get those conversations out. I would also recommend you watch our episode this week because one of the things that was mentioned here is the tax, the tax task force that is trying to reform taxes. And there are several issues there that are going to have future impacts on counties. And it's not county's fault that these things are happening. And, and it's a, it was an eye-opening program for me, and I spend all my time looking at these county issues. And I learned things from a program I've done for 10 years. That's my comment to this audience, and I thank you all for staying. The CountySeat.TV, most of these issues you're talking about, we've talked about more than 10 times. Go home and invest a little time in it. There are things that can be done. Come back and have a productive discussion with your county leaders about what to do, but understand the process a little bit better, and that's what we've been trying to do. Okay. I didn't mean to take that time to, to deal with that. I wanted to talk about County Seat. We have, we have now done 52 episodes a year for nine years. We have, have support for many counties. We had support for Morgan County for this one year with, with a core sponsorship in our program. I believe you were still on the council of that.
I'll remind people.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry. We need to try, if we're going to continue this effort to try to educate people about county governance, you guys ought to watch that front. Do, do not have a voice. So I'd like to point out a couple of things about what County Seat does and what County Seat is. If County Seat, an episode of the County Seat was a newspaper article, and we were to transcribe our half-hour show on one topic, because we do a single topic a week, it would be a six-page spread in a full-size newspaper. That would be the entire A section of the Ogden Standard Examiner. Okay, if we were a talk radio program, the longest talk radio interviews right now are Ron Arquette's on KNRS, a talk radio station out of Salt Lake. He averages eight, eight and a half minutes, and then he's on to another topic. It would take more than three of those conversations to cover what we talk about in a single episode. Senator Thatcher, whom you probably don't know because he's a Salt Lake Valley senator, once made a comment about County Seat. And senators and legislators are watching this program every week. I, I can figure best it's about 60% of them, but I've had other people tell me that it's higher. In fact, on your document, the very first quote by Senator Ralph Okhrun, who chairs one of the committees, the very first thing he said is, or his quote is, and I will read it. If I can find the right page. Let's see, let's see the extra comments. Did you see the County Seat? That is the first question asked each week in the Natural Resources, Agriculture, and Environmental Committee by Senator Ralph Okhrun. The legislature has more impact on county government than most people realize, and they can leave unfunded mandates, and I can tick off several of them that we've covered, that lead counties hanging the bag in, in areas of jail funding, in areas of mental health, in, in the way they restructure the road taxes and the gas taxes. There was a big issue a couple of years ago where they were trying to shift a whole bunch of burden of the gas tax over to the schools by doing some, some hocus pocus and juggling. We spent a half hour and talked about that. Somebody watched that. I know it changed several people's minds, including some teachers that came up to me at a trade show and said, "I watched your show on the County Seat," and I was all in favor of that gas tax. And after your program, I voted against. I was not for it after that. So it's an important, it's an important dialogue and a conversation. The County Seat is not a big TV audience, and there are people who criticize it and say, "Well, you don't have that many people watching." It's on average about 84,000 people a week. And in a state with multiple millions, that's not that great, you would think. I could make the County Seat a very popular program. But we would be talking about the treasurer running away with the surveyor and, and off to Mexico and stuff like that. That would get more people to watch. It would be like Dancing with the Stars or Real Housewives. But the problem is, it wouldn't be the discussion that needs to take place for the citizens to understand the issue. So by its very design, we wanted to reach the thought leaders in the community, the people that show up at these meetings, the, the people across the state that are engaged in the process as a means to take a half-hour, explain an issue that's relevant to counties, and then let them start discussions in their neighborhoods. And I think we've succeeded at that. And while it may not be a large audience, I can guarantee you that this program is watched everywhere in the state. It doesn't matter if I'm walking into the trading post in Bonazuma Creek or whether I'm going into the post office, general store at the top end of Box Elder County in Grous Creek. Somebody will talk to me about County Seat. And usually they're talking about how grateful they are that there's a program where they can go to understand it. We've generated an audience that knows the timing place to come talk about these issues. And I highly recommend it. You might find it a little boring at first, but once you start, once you start to dive into it and you start to understand that these counties aren't in it alone. You know, the Utah county just had a meltdown over their property tax issue this year, and your county's experiencing it. Wayne County doesn't either. Why? Because they do this hearing every single year. And you say, "That's great. Why does it Morgan County do?" Well, the difference is, Wayne County only has 1,100 people in the whole county.
Hey, Chad, hold on.
I'm sorry.
I appreciate your comments. I'm going to get straight to the point. I need you getting straight to the point what you want.
I, I'm sorry. Okay. We would like your support. We would like you to come back in and, and support the program for this year. I know it's not a popular thing to say at this particular meeting. I have included information about it. I funded this show personally very heavily last year by redirecting funds from other projects. And I paid more than any other sponsor last year. And we've got, we've got counties that have been carrying the burden to keep this on here, and it's much easier of a burden to carry if more counties support it. It benefits all of them.
So, so were these your only two options?
Well, I left out the middle one. We have, we have a couple of sixth-class counties that come up with less, and we just try to accommodate that as best we can. Daggett County is an example with 800 people, is, with the help of their two cities, has come up with $6,500 in a county that's 94% federal land with less than 1,000 residents. That's, that's a pretty good commitment on their part.
So you're basically looking at whatever you can get?
We, we are to determine whether we're going to continue. I do want to let you know, and I'm sorry to take up so much time, that there's value in doing this program, and there's value in being involved in it. And as sponsors, you're welcome to all the material that we generate. If there's an issue that explains something to your community and you have an angle on it, you don't have to call and say, "Hey, can we, can we reprint that? Can we download that?" That's already there in the agreement. You just go grab it, do with it what you want, and, and get your message. But if you will use this and, and distribute it, a lot of the questions that you have to deal with can be, can lead to better discussions through understanding. And, and most people see that it's not one county alone that deals with this problem. Pretty much any problem that you have, from road rights, right-of-way's across private property, to jail funding, to centrally-assessed taxes, it's not a single county's issue. And, and this program displays that in space because usually it's a multi-county discussion.
So I see the broadcast times in here, but you said, are all of your episodes just posted to YouTube?
They are. In addition to the two primary broadcast times on, on Channel 4, and Channel 4, by the way, is extremely good to us. They promote us as part of their Sunday morning news block, but they exert no editorial control over us whatsoever. And, and that's unheard of. And we sit, we sit just before that really most popular outdoor recreation show, At Your Leisure. We use that same show as a weekend on Saturday nights where we have Rod Dekker's old Take-Two time slot. And, and they're fairly effective time slots that just don't happen. But starting the next day, the TV channel 6 in Vernal starts broadcasting, I think there's six times a week. KTTA down in Monroe and Richfield, they are broadcasting that show every single day, twice a day. Lunchtime, dinnertime, all week long, give us the County Seat. You can hop on to KTTA and see it. So the local access channels have it. I've only got three counties right now that have our weekly program on their website, but every county in the state should have a link to YouTube and put your comments on there. Say, "This is how we feel about this issue, but learn the issue." So it broadcasts, I believe, 25 times a week currently between the different channels that carry it. And we put it on YouTube. And it's, it's usually on YouTube before it's on Channel 4. So if you want to preview what's happening, just hop on there Friday afternoon, go to our YouTube channel. You'll find it. If you want to link it, share it, do it. If you can share it, without being a sponsor, I heartily recommend that you take advantage of it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have questions for Chad?
I have a question for the council. But if the spots can be used for tourism and economic development, is that something we can use to take out of, of our tourism taxes?
The, the advertising spots, this is, this is John Dugle-certified. As long as you're advertising on a broadcast program, tourism, it is a legitimate expense, and this can be, this can be applied that way. And our packages usually include some production for you to help you get your tourism messages out. So...
Okay, well, so I would, I would say before we, personal opinion, before we commit travel and tourism dollars, we at least include Tina in the conversation, or she's the one that is monitoring that?
Yeah, I agree. I think we should discuss.
But that's a great idea to at least discuss.
We most certainly, because we have such a close connection with At Your Leisure, which is a very friendly tourism show, we would probably make it worth your while to do that. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that. Are there any other questions? I'm sorry I got so wrapped up, but I just, I felt like there was an opportunity. Folks, please, go investigate this stuff.
I want to make a motion to postpone this to the 17th.
So moved.
So that Tina can be here.
I'll second.
Motion by member Newton to discuss that on this, to postpone to the 17th to include Tina. Motion by member Newton. Second by member McConnell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We'll have that on our agenda.
I'll calm down now.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our December 17th is filling up.
Yeah, real fast. Lance? Go back to County Code 8.6.
Well, this is a continuation of the public hearing from the Planning Commission in your meeting regarding the outdoor lighting ordinance amendment. Quick recap is, we had the direction of the council and the Planning Commission. Staff developed and put together a lighting ordinance you have for you. The Planning Commission had good discussions about it and recommended approval. At your last meeting, you had some concerns about some of the items and the strictness of it. Understandably, I mean, it is setting a standard for lighting in the county. The ordinance is written in a way that's hopefully, you know, clear and easy to enforce and sets and addresses the issue so that we do have some control over the lighting, but some of the items were a little bit stringent. And it's back before you for discussion tonight. I can keep going and walk through it, or we can just discuss what some of your concerns are?
Okay, questions for staff on the lighting ordinance?
So in our last discussion, my biggest hang-up was in Section 8-6-44G, number one, lighting conversion. And this was the section that would require existing buildings, really it's mostly businesses because single-family, two-family, three-family dwellings are not included in it. So basically be businesses or maybe multifamily dwellings. When reading through this, I like everything except number one, that lighting conversion section. But I wanted to maybe have some discussion as to what alternatives there might be there. I don't like the idea of forcing business owners to upgrade their lighting, even if it is over a 10-year period. I'm fine with the rest of it, you know, if they're going to make changes to the building anyway. I don't have an issue with that. I just don't, I struggle with getting behind forcing them to make a change just because we think they ought to. So I don't know if there's some thoughts that everybody has, or maybe you have, Lance, on some alternatives to that?
I, I just, it does, it's very typical to allow for an ordinance to, you have to start implementing it. And 10 years is kind of a good round number. It seems like a lot of grandfathering out and amortizing these types of issues, 10 years seems to be a good rule of thumb. But we could certainly extend that or just, you know, require it to be replaced, you know, when it is replaced. I mean, we, we could just say it's, it's allowed, but you're not going to get toward the, the goal of the lighting ordinance. It's going to take a lot longer. Anyway, so, I mean, there's pros and cons there, but...
Do we know, do we know how many businesses might not currently comply with this? I mean, do we have any idea what we're talking about as far as impact?
I would suspect that, well, we don't have that many businesses. Churches are often the biggest culprit. But they're, they're, you know, working on that. We have the opportunity with a lot of more energy-efficient lighting that it pays for itself to convert it. And so when that conversion, I, I suspect actually it would happen quicker than 10 years for most businesses. It would be worth it. But as far as the number, I should be guessing. I don't know.
You mentioned that same section, the county may employ incentives. Is that, are you talking about buying their lights for them, or what kind of incentives are you talking?
And it could be any type of incentive program. You know, that was one of the tweaks that the Planning Commission has, that the county shall, the original draft was the county shall start an incentive program. They changed it to May. Their recommendation is to change it to May. So as, as we have opportunities and it would, you know, it would be just simply, well, the county got a really good deal and bought a bunch of lights, and now everybody can get them at a reasonable price. So if there were opportunities or grants, that would just be something out there that the county may do with their light. That's how I, I don't know of any specific grants at this point.
So Mike, if you're not in favor of a timed phase-out of non-conforming lights, you could do, and Lance suggested this, but you could have a provision that indicates that when any, any time a fixture is replaced, it must be replaced with a conforming light. And then you're not forcing it under a certain timeframe. And then you're not forcing it under a certain timeframe. And I think Lance is correct as well. A lot of those will be more energy-efficient, so some may choose on their own to make that kind of a change and then be required to conform. The other thing about LED fixtures is that frequently you're not just replacing the bulb, you're replacing the fixture when they go out, so.
So does number two already do that? As I read it, it just says the replacement shall comply with the requirements.
Yeah. Yeah, it does. And I don't think you, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think you object to all of Section 1, it's just the first sentence, correct?
Well, yeah, I guess the first sentence goes clear till, within 10 years, right?
Yeah. Yeah, and you'd have to modify the second one if you took out the first, but, so it has a clearer subject, but.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with educational methods.
For example, the need to replace with a conforming light fixture, that would be the notice that you would send out periodically.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with that. My concern is the forcing to do within 10 years. The truth is, I think a lot probably will within 10 years anyway. I just don't like the idea of the county forcing that.
I mean, you brought up an issue last time with wholesome, I mean, that thing is lit up like a Christmas tree.
Yeah.
And that would be awfully expensive for.
Oh, yeah, there's got to be hundreds of lights up there.
Well, the thing, the thing is anymore, it's getting to where those type of lights are not available anymore too.
You're right.
They're phasing all that stuff out.
The salt lamps are.
I mean, I'm, I'm with you, I don't want to put a time restriction on it.
The rest of it I don't really have any issue with and I, I think is fine.
Well, and I want to eliminate the 10:30 PM on the occasional evening lighting, it's got to be turned off by 10:30. The only reason I say that is because we've had, I mean, this is talking about the occasional events that are exempt from the lighting.
Oh, yeah.
Exemptions, but the problem you have with that 10:30, I mean, the girls volleyball does the, all my volleyball deal, so they're on all night long, that would make, that would require them to turn off. You got the rec leagues that continue after 10:30 at times. I would like to eliminate the 10:30 PM.
That's on the exempted things, right?
Yeah, it's on 10A. Because it talks about your special events.
Yeah.
That are exempt, but then A tells you they got to be turned off by 10:30.
I agree.
So I would like, I would like to eliminate A personally. And then I'm okay with, and then I would like to take the 10-year deal out. Because like you said, if you change one, if you take one out, it changes two, whereas if we just take the 10-year out, then it tells them that they have to start, that when they replace them, they have to be conforming.
I'm good with that.
I'm as well.
Member McConnell?
Yeah, I don't object to that.
You're all right? So okay, so you okay with that, Lance?
Yeah, same. So 10A would be deleted.
10A would be deleted.
So I'd have to change a little bit of the paragraph above, provided, so there'd be some word switching there. And then 8644G1, what would your change on that again? Or did I hear, what would you change?
We're eliminating the 10-year.
So I would take out the first two sentences, so it would just read, the county may employ educational methods and incentives to encourage voluntary compliance.
So the last three lines is all number one?
And take out the five-year period and to assist the public in understanding of playing with this chapter.
So say that again, you're going to remove that whole?
So the top two sentences of number one. And maybe we can just remove everything. I don't know that we need to say that we might educate the public about it. Does that need to be said? Okay, then I would just eliminate all of number one.
All of number one.
My only other question on this was whether, if we in fact wanted to limit holiday-infested lighting to just residential uses.
Well, I agree, no. I think it should be allowed in commercial uses as well.
What was the rationale? I think you said something about it last time. Do you not want businesses to have holiday lighting? Is that unintentional or intentional?
Yeah, not all businesses certainly, but there will be the occasional one that says, hey, we are having a party every week. And so that's why we're lit up like a Christmas tree, literally and figuratively. So I think to change it, I would just say that the holiday-infested outdoor lighting for commercial, you know, for residential uses, leave it as is and then maybe add, you know, 5A and 5B for residential and commercial. And then one would be, the commercial standard would have to be, at all major holidays, insert a list of what those are. And, you know, the timeframe, when they have to be up and down by. Just to, just to bookend it so that it's not, so it's clear. Some people will start their Christmas celebrations.
Yeah, I'd be fine with, well. All retailers start their Christmas celebration in October now. But, but probably, or at least their marketing effort. So, so, and, and if we want to do that as an amendment, I'm okay, I'm okay with that as well, coming up with an amendment for commercial lighting, if you need more time to do it, if you want to pass this tonight.
I mean, I'd be okay with us passing it next time if we want to wait and see that in it. I don't think that, it's a pending ordinance at this point, so there's not really urgency to have it passed tonight versus in two weeks if we want to make those changes. Would you agree with that, Jim?
I do, and historically, if you're changing more than just a few letters, councils have liked to see that back in front of them before they vote on it.
So is there a reason we couldn't move this to the 7th of January?
Or December 17th, right? We just have too much on December 17th.
Yeah, we've moved a lot to the 17th.
I don't know what else is going to be on the agenda. Either one's fine with it.
It's like Mike said, it's a pending ordinance, so it's not going anywhere.
So Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion that we postpone this until the January 7th meeting with the understanding that we're going to make the changes that we discussed tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, so motion by Member Newton, second by Member McConnell. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Definition for mixed-use and clarification development agreement requirement.
Okay. This is one we need to make a decision on tonight if we can. Similarly, without going into a lot of detail, we've had the Town Center Ordinance was created last year. As we've started to work with it and we've seen some areas for improvement, one is to clarify the definition of what a mixed-use development is, that it has both residential and commercial uses in it. The second item would be to clarify, when the development agreement, and any development in the Town Center Ordinance is required to have a development agreement to outline the details of all the different community standards we have in that, so. And so that, when does that development agree, the agreement required, has been added to this. We also added, and that was kind of the initial start.
So is this our, is this our mixed-use percentage? I see that's 35%.
Right, well, let me get to that. So, and then, so, and then we added to, just while we were talking about the development agreements and making that amendment, we went ahead and added specific criteria that need to be addressed in that development agreement. And then, and part of the mixed-use discussion in the amendment there is, what is the appropriate amount of commercial and residential, what's the ratio that should be there in a mixed-use development? The initial discussions were 50/50. As we looked at it, staff mainly was concerned that requiring 50% commercial would just make vacant land, it's not being used, and it would actually be a little punitive. And we kind of worked on that and had some criteria. Council asked us a couple, a couple months ago to develop criteria for when we would go below the 50%, but when we took that discussion back to the Planning Commission and per your direction, the, the Planning Commission discussed it at length and came to the conclusion that trying to find a way to go below 50% in certain situations was just too hard to nail down what that criteria would be. And so they landed on saying that any mixed-use development would have to be at least 35% commercial for, and then added one provision that if, after 10 years, if that 35% of commercial had not been developed, then it could be reverted to another use. So they have to make a commitment to the commercial being as part of that mixed-use development. And they just simplified it, didn't make any conditions or criteria, and they just said, it's got to be 35%, and you got to hang on to it for 10 years. After 10 years, you can change it.
You can put it into residential after 10 years?
They could. And the development would be, you have to state what that, that next use would be if it wasn't developed in 10 years.
It would state it in advance.
It would state it in advance with the development agreement. And so criteria would be that, that was kept in the ordinance.
Okay, so if I'm, if I'm doing, if I'm phasing.
Sure.
Okay? I'm going to designate my last phase as my commercial.
Sure.
And it takes me 10 years to do phase one through five. And when I get to phase six, it is all designated as commercial, I can change that to residential because I've held it for 10 years in a commercial deal.
Well, that would have to be part of the development agreement, but potentially, yes.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at, I mean, what's the sense in putting 35% there if we're going to allow them to do that? Because that's exactly what they'll do.
10 years, for the land that we have that is in the Town Center general plan land use area and in the currently zoned Town Center area, and any place we would do that, to sit on vacant land for 10 years and not develop it in the hopes that in 10 years the market will be ready for whatever you think it is.
We have a development agreement now that's been sitting for six.
Correct.
And they haven't turned a shovel. So by the time they do their residential, they've hit their, they've hit their tan, they don't have to do commercial.
I think it would be a substantial, I cannot, my personal opinion is that it would be very expensive for them to sit on property like that for 10 years without.
It hasn't affected, it hasn't affected this one, well.
And, and I think that's an anomaly.
Okay, well, I know, I disagree with that part. I think if we're going to designate 35%, it's 35%. And it stays commercial. I mean, that's what, I mean, everybody's complaining about no commercial, and now we're giving them an "a".
So all we would have to do to address your concern is that under C of, yeah, A5Ks, C would be to put it in and just eliminate number one, which is, so C would just be that mixed-use development shall be 35% commercial development area. And then number one is a provision to change that if it's been there for 10 years, we would just delete number C1.
Well, that just might be, no, about the rest of the council.
Well, I'm just saying that that could be easily removed.
So we could take that part out and that would leave that to 35%.
Correct.
Okay. Well, that's my.
This whole discussion kind of illustrates the paradox of commercial development in rural counties. Because in a normal circumstance, if you designate property as commercial, you're up-zoning the property, you're increasing its value, and everybody's going to be delighted. We zone property commercial and the, the market sits back and says, you're not ready for us to come.
Correct.
And, and it's really difficult from my perspective to, to apply a percentage overall in, in the over, I can get it in the overall project area, but on a project-by-project basis, then it may not make sense. And I'll give you a practical example. CW Development has come in and they've made a proposal for primarily residential in the mixed-use development. They've got that little sliver out on Old Highway. If that, if I thought that was in fact going to be where the core of the Town Center should be, then I would say, no, you're not even trying to accomplish the purpose of the, of the Town Center zone. But if the proposal that Ruland brought in last week was done across the street and, and hit, that was rezoned, that was zoned commercially through there and he developed those, that office, that flex space, and the retail space that he was proposing, and the hotels, and that was across the street, then I, I'd let CW Land take, go forward with their proposal, even though that's not 35%. Because I don't think we need or we're big enough to have all of it be developed as commercial Town Center that, that's within that area. And it, so if we could get that other one across the street moving forward, then what CW Land is proposing would make sense. It's drive-in, drive-out, commercial. The corner would be drive-in, drive-out, commercial. And the Town Center, where I would hope people would drive in, stay, and spend time in that center and, you know, the creek and Tina's Covered Bridge. If they spent time there or an evening there, that's ideally what you want to do, is create that sense of place so that the retail people say, we want to, we want to be part of that surrounding for those individuals. So I, I'm fine with the development agreement provisions, and frankly, I don't know how else to address this. But if we were to get that advanced, I would probably come back, say, whoever's in first and moves forward, if they put enough commercial in, then I'll be coming back and saying, I think we ought to reduce that percentage because I don't think we need it. Does that make sense?
I agree with that. I think it's difficult because we want to look at the project as a whole, but we really can't because we have multiple landowners. And we can't.
And you got to find the one with the wherewithal and the will and maybe just a touch crazy to advance the funds necessary to do that kind of development. So my only other issue is, I'm not sure why in your, your land use table, you went from conditional uses to permitted uses for all of these educational uses.
I think that would do something.
Please.
Okay, so is that part of this agenda item?
Correct.
The use table is.
Yeah, it's part of, it's part of this amendment.
I have questions on that educational services and a couple others.
Let me talk about that for a second, that's okay. When we developed the Town Center Ordinance, we went through the Commercial Land Use Code and we said, well, you know, do we want to do permitted or conditional use permits? We also required that any development in the Town Center in a development, the development agreement allows the county a lot of flexibility to put any conditions or stipulations on that development. That is also what a conditional use permit does. Except for a conditional use permit, if you can mitigate it, it becomes an allowed use. So now we've got a development agreement that we're negotiating, but at the same time, we're asking them to do a conditional use permit that, that we would have to potentially approve. And so there's an inherent conflict between those two elements. And with the development agreement, we'll have enough teeth, we'll have enough control to identify specific issues that any development in the Town Center would require. So staff's recommendation is remove all the conditional use permits because we've got the development agreement to address specific criteria.
So, okay, I understood, good reasoning. Why don't we just not permit those uses in this zone?
Because we still want them permitted.
I don't, I don't want a college or university in the Town Center.
Well, and if you want to eliminate it and change this use table, we can certainly discuss removing certain uses. We just simply wanted to get, make sure that we didn't have continuing down that path of a conditional use that we have to approve in a development agreement that clashes with that.
Well, but, but a permitted use you would have to approve as well. I mean, your development agreement, they're going to come in and make a. I mean, your development agreement, they're going to come in and make a proposal and you're going to have a negotiation with respect to the development agreement. And you're saying you can do that with respect to permitted or conditional uses. But in terms of a, a general land use principle, permitted use is going to have a higher level of vesting from the get-go than a conditional use is. So I'm, all's I'm saying, I don't think schools are an appropriate use within the town center. Now, I realize schools may have their state institutions and may be able to force their way into certain locations. But I don't want to encourage it by putting them into the town center as a permitted or a conditional use. Does that, I mean, even, even if it's, even if it's a beauty school, they, they're not great retail uses. Most covenants, conditions and restrictions will prohibit them, you know, because they take up a ton of parking and they don't generate the kind of, so that's all I'm, maybe I'm asking the question the wrong way or maybe it's, what I'm suggesting is we remove schools as conditional or permitted uses from the zone.
Well, the only one I was.
I think that's a little different. We're trying to remove conditional uses. If we would also like to remove certain permitted uses, that would be fine and we can do that.
Okay, well, the only one I was looking at maybe leaving in there was the, was the daycare.
Which one's that? What page?
It's on page 5. It's right, it's the very last one on 5 of 20. You got your educational services.
5 of 20.
You don't want to allow daycares?
You know what?
No, that's the only one I would say to allow would be a daycare.
Or under.
As a permitted use.
Yeah, under educational services.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I, I agree with that. I agree with that. I had marked academies and boarding schools, but not child daycare. I, I would keep that in. I guess I didn't really think of child daycare centers as educational service, but I suppose it is.
What about healthcare and social assistance offices?
If you have a mixed use that has office use, then that makes sense to me.
That should be included, right?
Yeah. And I mean, I'm open to discussion on, on educational institutions, but I just, most of them I would say, I don't want in the town center.
Well, if they were of any significant size, they'd fill our entire town center.
Well, I mean, but like, University of Phoenix is on one floor of one of the, of an office building. You're not prohibiting that?
Yeah, we would be. But, but that's a, that's a good discussion to have. Like I said, there's.
It gets a little bit to the form-based code discussion. If it's an office, if it's a commercial building, if it's a professional office, do we want to prohibit uses that might go in?
What if we, what if we qualified it? What if we qualified it so that the educational institutions were permitted only within the office elements of a, of a mixed use?
And I think that would be discussed and vetted through the development agreement. So we'd add into the development agreement that these types of uses, you're going to, you're going to have office be part of your 35% commercial and in that office building, here's the allowed uses. And that's what we tried to add, that's some of the land use criteria that we added to the development agreement requirement.
So what do you want to do, what do you want to do there?
I'm just looking at the development agreement provision for just a second.
Okay. Well, and then one of the other one that I, and Member McConnell, you'll disagree, down on page 13 of 20, the residential units as part of the mixed-use development. So are we talking residential units on top of the commercial?
It could be horizontally or vertically integrated. That's the general plan.
And so my, my issue with that, if we're trying to create an area where people will come and hang out, do we really want residential in there?
Well, I would say yes. Some of the most successful, you know, the planning term is third place, most successful areas where, that are successful in the evening, that are successful business areas have a mix of residential and commercial close together. So that's, that's.
Well, close together, but not in the same area.
Well, it would be vertical, it'd just be, the top floors are residential uses and the first floor is, is a commercial. That would be an allowed use there.
City Creek's mixed with residential on top. Gateways, mixed use with residential on top. Farmington Station is not. Farmington Station separates. They have office on top and retail over across the street. Yeah, retail and office together, but they don't have a residential element.
I'm picturing more Farmington Station on City Creek or Gateway.
So maybe, maybe we could address the issue of the permitted uses by, with the development agreement language, specifying that the, the land uses for a particular development will be specified in the development agreement. Selected from the table, but specifically identified in the development agreement. So that when the developer comes in and makes a proposal, they can say, this is what we're proposing, these are the uses that we're going after, and that becomes a part of the development agreement. As opposed to just having a land use table that identifies them all as permitted. I think if we want to tie it, we want to make sure that, if we want to have the ability to tie those uses down, we need to be specific about that in this language. So that the development agreement is going to specify what the permitted uses are in the project. Do you think it already does that?
Well, I was trying to get to that in, on page 3 of 20.
Right.
B2A1 is, is the proposed development standards. Development agreements, 2 is development agreement shall include at a minimum, A, proposed development standards including, and then number 1 is land use standards establishing, should be A mix, A mix of land use types, location and density.
Okay.
So they have to identify the land use types, where those are going to be and what level of density to get at. Is it vertically or horizontally integrated?
So I think we could do that, but I think, I think I would, I would add approved permitted uses from table, whatever that table is. And then say, and land use standards establishing, yeah, the mix of land use types, location and density. Just so we can be specific about identifying for the potential landowner or developer that the development agreement is going to identify the land uses that are appropriate. Because depending on what they come in with and show us as their concept plan, we may or may not think that a given use is appropriate. And I think that's what you're thinking this was going to accomplish anyway, was that we were going to negotiate that and put it into the development agreement. And I think that will give us a better tool for doing that. And with that, I'm probably okay, even if you come in and you propose the right university, then maybe it's great.
Well, and really with the development agreement, you would, the, the use table becomes a little bit secondary. Because with the development agreement, you can go up or down from the basis zone. You could add uses over one point.
And even, Roland, to your, your point, not liking the residential element above the retail and office. I mean, again, what I would suggest is we leave it open for them to make that proposal. If that's what they want to do and that's, and it looks good. To me, it's an aesthetic issue when it comes to that, how it's integrated.
So leave that as a, a C2 instead of permitted?
No, we, we would leave it as permitted, but now when it's going to be expressed that is part of the negotiation of the development agreement, we're going to be agreeing to whether or not it's an appropriate or an inappropriate use. Because we're going to, we're going to effectively narrow the land use table, the permitted uses by development agreement.
Correct.
Some of them are going to come in and say, no, whatever's permitted is permitted. That's what we want. But we can say, no, let's see what your proposal is and let's talk about why you think these uses are permitted.
And that's taken in whole with all of the uses of the development agreement.
So the only thing we're doing then is just removing C1. So the rest of this is all going to stay?
Well, we're removing C1 and then in B2A1, we're adding approved permitted uses from table blank and land use standards establishing, I would add the word A there, A, A mix of land uses, types, location and density.
Okay. So I know we already discussed this, but going back to C and 35%.
Yes.
I agree with Member McConnell's example. I just wanted to maybe spitball, are there, is there another way to get to that point? I mean, and I know the discussion has been, well, with the, based on what I read here from the planning commission was, it gets pretty complicated if we start adding exceptions or whatever to it. But I mean, to me, that property down, that's part of this, there's, I don't know how many parcels, what, six or eight maybe? Or is there more than that?
Which parcel?
In the town center zone.
Oh.
How many would you say?
There's only two parcels technically that are zoned town center currently. There would be a much larger area that's covered with 20 parcels that is designated as town center in the general plan.
So I guess my point is if we've got all these various parcels and they all have to have 35%, which is fine, we may end up with a real mixed-up area. Whereas if there is a developer that comes in and says, I want to do, you know, 80% commercial right here in the middle, great. We don't need 35% across the street anymore, right? Because it's all grouped together. Is there a way that we could do that?
Okay, and so I think, especially hearing the discussion tonight, I think the conservative approach would be, let's leave it at 35%. If that circumstance comes in, then we can come back and amend it. And then it's going to lengthen the process, it's going to make it difficult. But maybe at that point, it would be, at this point, our experience has been, let's be conservative and protective as much as possible. So leave it at 35. And if you want to, that's such a great plan that you can also convince us to amend the code for you, then we'll deal with that one.
Okay, I think that's fair. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what other solutions there are, so.
But that's exactly, and it will happen, hopefully it will happen that this will become, the 35% commercial will be either really viable and good and, you know, very doable or we'll find out very quickly that it's just not working.
Okay, fair enough. Just one other question. So in B of that same section, it says, "The development agreement shall be required to enumerate the standards and specific requirements for development to offer minor variations and more clearly defined standards for individual projects." Is there anywhere, I guess that the shall be required, is that sufficient from your perspective? And maybe Jan, I appreciate your view on this. Is, shall be required sufficient to indicate that the form of the agreement has, is subject to the approval of the county council? I mean, it's going to be in agreement with the county council, so it seems, or the county, so it's kind of inferred. I just, do you think we should clarify that or?
I didn't participate in the planning, I mean, hearings, but was there any discussion on that earlier?
I mean, that's the adopted language of, that's the current code.
Right.
But to strengthen it, I, I thought it, I thought it covered it. But I mean, it's, you have, a development agreement shall be required. I don't think there's any lid roll on that. We could just do exactly that, put a period after required and then add a second sentence that such development agreement shall enumerate standards and specific requirements.
You okay with that?
Well, you, let me just, you could say, "A development agreement approved by the county council shall be required." Period. Such development agreement shall enumerate the standards in specific. I think it's inferred, but I think it might be helpful to just add that clarification.
Any more questions? Okay, motion, what do you want to do? Do you want to come back, look at the final draft?
This is Councilmember Haslam, Chair. We need to be, we have six months and this pending ordinance has been, been worked on for several months. Needs to either be adopted tonight or not.
Or denied.
Or denied. We cannot, our time limit is up on the pending ordinance. And so if we don't adopt it tonight, it becomes no longer a pending ordinance.
So I could make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to MCC 8-SK and 8-21 Town Center as recommended by the Planning Commission and the staff with the following modifications to section, I'm sorry, the way this printed, I don't know if it's what you sent or what I did in my print job, but I'm a little confused. The, what, what's the main section for where B and the development agreement is required?
85K2.
85K2B to include after the phrase, "A development agreement approved by the county council," period. "Approved by the county council shall be required," period. "Such development agreement shall enumerate the standards and carry on with the sentence." And then in subsection 2A1, I would add at the beginning of that section, "approved permitted uses from table," you know, the table.
5C3.
Did you get that?
85C3.
85C3. And, and then it's the balance of the sentence with just the word A inserted in front of mix of land uses. And striking C1 in the same section.
You get that, Stacy?
I did not, I'm going to have to go back and listen to that one back.
I'll go.
Okay, you're good. Okay. So most, Member McConnell, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Member Swan? Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Lance?
Can I ask a question? This was on the public hearing, so.
I thought we did the public hearing at the last meeting.
So it is still a continuation of the public hearings, but the public hearings are taking place.
Thanks.
Okay, Lance?
I believe the next item is the request for the.
Do you want us to wait on that one?
Please no.
We bought the last one.
What's that?
We're not going to vote on that one then?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
Yeah.
I missed it.
That's one we just went through.
I was typing up, missed it.
Ready for ELQIS?
Yep.
Okay.
This is a request for subdivision plan amendment for the ELQIS, the state subdivision. It's currently two lots on 22 acres. It's currently two lots on 22 acres. They have requested to split it into four lots. It's gone through the plot amendment process, been reviewed by the county engineer, surveyor, and staff, and the planning commission has recommended approval with some changes to conditions. The drafts, the staff report that you have in front of you, staff has actually reduced some of those conditions. There was originally nine. The applicant has continued to work on and address those conditions, so there's really, we're down to six conditions that need to be taken place. And even some of those have made some progress, but, but we'd like to, we recommend that they, those six conditions be the requirement at this point in time, just to make sure everything is done before we report this flat.
So, so have all the issues from Wasatch Hill been addressed?
I think most of them have, I'm going to check that one. I'd have to go back and check all those. That is one of the conditions, that all seven of those be met. I'm not 100% sure on all of them, but that is a condition of approval as recommended.
Questions for staff? Questions for the applicant? If not, a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Elquista State subdivision plot amendment one, application number 19.035, located at approximately 1468 North Morgan Valley Drive, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated December 3, 2019.
Motion, Member Newton?
Second.
Member McConnell? Questions on motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm a nay.
Okay, perfect. Have you had a chance to look at the interlocal agreement with regards to the recreation program?
We've got one more.
We've got one more.
What?
Yeah, Conwood Hills.
Oh, sorry, I'd marked off the wrong one. Sorry.
Uh, this is a simple plot amendment for Conwood Hills, amendment number five. They're taking two lots, and lots one and two, and combining them into just one lot. The owner owns both of them, and has gone through the process to get this done. Staff sees no issues or concerns. There's just some very minor conditions that are making sure everything's taken care of before it's reported, such as CC and covenants, codes and restrictions, and the surveyor and engineer comments for all those items. It's, it really does not have a major impact or change, and the planning commission recommends
So let me just ask, the condition related to the CCNR amendment, what are you asking them to do? Just amend with respect to their voting rights, or?
Correct, I think there's some language in there that states that there's lots one and two, and, um, I'm not exactly sure on that. But there are some elements in there that need be tweaked.
Okay. And they're familiar with it and comfortable with making that change?
I believe so.
Okay.
Any more questions for staff?
I'll make a motion if you're ready for it.
Member Newton?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the Conwood Hills subdivision plot amendment five, application number 19.045, located approximately 5776 Silver Mountain Cove, based on the findings and with the conditions listed in the staff report dated December 3, 2019.
Motion, Member Newton, do you have a second?
Second.
Member Ballantyne? Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So you're good.
Thank you.
So on the recreation...
I'm not sure who the keeper of the electronic copy is. A paper copy appeared on my desk, and so I just kind of marked it up, and I think you seem to make your packet. I think Member Kilmer had someone drop that off, and so I had no real issue with a few little marks you saw there.
So I, I actually sent Member Kilmer a fairly significant markup? Is this something that needs to be approved tonight?
No.
So what I would suggest is, I'll provide you all with a copy of what my proposal, proposed markup is. I, I actually, and, and this is outside of my wheelhouse, Jan, so you feel good to correct me if I'm wrong. I, I didn't think that the mechanism that they proposed for appointment of the board was consistent with the requirements of the Act.
I don't know of nothing, because of our class of county, that's, that's at least correct as far as schoolwork and makeup for sure, and maybe some other things.
Yeah, the makeup, it's, what, where the, the board got to approve the two, that part didn't seem to track exactly with it. So I'll, what I would propose is, I will send this to everyone, and you can see it, and Jan, feel free to correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. I, you'll, you'll be able to, it's all black link, you'll be able to see exactly what I'm proposing.
Can this be postponed till January 7th, or do we need to do it before the end of the year?
I don't think a week is going to make a difference.
It has 2020 as a proposed date already in the top line, so I think we're okay.
Mr. Chair, I move that we postpone this item.
Yeah, but, you're right. You're right. It does say 2020, but I put December in front of it. I don't think they want to do that long for it.
Uh, I move that we postpone the approval of the interlocal cooperation agreement to fund Morgan County Recreation Program until our December 7th, or, excuse me, January 7th meeting. Now you got December in my head.
2020.
Yeah.
Okay, motion, my Member Newton, second.
Second.
Member Swan? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those two have been gone. And Tina is gone.
So are we, Tina's, I think, is, would be postponed until the December 17th meeting.
Okay, and that one will need to be on the 7th.
Yes.
Do we need to make an official?
I'll make that motion.
I'd say make that motion.
I'll second it.
Member McConnell? Second, okay, so I have a motion by Member McConnell to postpone adoption of two new tax line items for roads and fire an ambulance, by Member McConnell, second by Member Newton.
Postponing till December 17th.
Till the 17th of December. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If that's it, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Member Swan, second.
Second.
Member Ballantyne? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay.
Is this a color copy?
I'm not, I'm not on road, guys. Why don't we just make copies?
You're going to have to buy a second one just to get the instructions.
I'll, I'll just send it. I'll take it. I'll just send it to you.